God, what a difference.
Yeah.
This is a branded printer.
No, because I think you did the maybe the copy hadn't.
No, I did it even on good paper.
No, I think the WhatsApp chat probably reduce the resolution.
Oh, that's what it was.
Goes bad, you know, this is like real man.
Okay, um, so let's, let's talk about, um. Which, which issue here is the most important?
So I tell you, can I take this?
Absolutely.
See the, all four issues are very important to me. And these are the only issues I'm running, why I'm running for city council. The very first one is enhanced neighborhood safety. Hey, you know what's going on in your neighborhood? So much crime. People can't walk. I met so many uh older women who were born and raised here. I mean, they had tears in their eyes that they can't even walk the dog now. Uh, they're so fearful for everything. Uh, and then I met so many, you know, uh, people like especially women with kids. Uh, they are so fearful, they can't go out, they're so worried that someone gonna come stab them, take their purses, you know, harm the children. So we, we know what's going on and.
Yes, I'm well aware.
And one of the most important eh uh reason behind this is Gascon, his policies, and we all know that.
Right, but as a city, we don't really have control over that, other, I mean, you, you know.
So what we can do here as a city, we can get united first place, first thing, and recall this guy. I mean, I know it's all over L A though, but at least as a city, we should be united and then recall this guy.
You mean, we should be. Do, do you mean, um, that everybody should be?
Yeah, in Beverly Hills, yeah.
Doing, uh, being more active with.
No, no, no.
For the petitions?
I, I'll do that job, you will do that job. I mean, we go door to door, we get the signature, but people should be responsive enough. To come out and ready to sign, you know, because I, I meet so many people, I, I go to them for signatures and they just say, no, we don't wanna do it. I mean, I don't know, they're living in some kind of denial or delusion, I don't know.
There's some people that don't believe that he's the problem, or they could be part of the problem, or they're just, you know.
Yeah.
Or, uh, uh, or, and I don't even mean that those people are criminals, but maybe those people. Just because they're, they have a divide of, um, Democrat and Republican, and maybe that's what it's about.
That, that exactly I'm talking about. People have to come above their, their politics. You know, the party line, it's not about Democrat, it's not about Republican, it's about our city.
Yes.
You know, so we should be united, we should protect our citizens, our residents here in the city, our elders, our kids, our families. That's the most important thing, and it has to be.
What are some of your ideas to put, to, to make that happen?
So I'm, I'm gonna, see I have so many ideas, but I'm gonna go one by one on each issue I'm running on.
Okay.
So the first one on safety, my first idea would be, of course, as a city, we have to be united and recall this guy.
How are we gonna unite? How are you gonna help us?
We all have to talk to each other, you know, uh, if I'm do, I, I notice that people don't respond to things, but they have to be responsive to other people. And I'm trying to explain things up, they should be a good listener and see what's going on, you know, because people don't, don't wanna listen anymore, you know, because they are so much. I mean, their mind working.
Think that we don't really have a, uh, the ability to do anything.
Their mind working only like on side, you know, either I'm, I'm a Republican or I'm a Democrat, but they, they, they need to understand, it's not about. It's not about politics, it's all about our city, you know, so they have to understand this, so I think. If there are, if some people are really, you know, just don't wanna do it, we can help, help them out, but we should get as many people as possible. For this and try to sign it, so we can at least, you know, recall this guy and contribute as a city. I mean, even our city council endorse this, so that's number one.
I think we need some, I don't remember the amount of signatures, and I know that we weren't.
So we are.
But we need, you need, you need to have a cushion, so you need more, so.
Right now, we are at four hundred, some thousands. No, now maybe it's more, but I think we need around above six hundred thousand.
I, okay, I thought we were already at like five something, or we, or maybe I was wrong.
Not yet, not yet, so, but we should be, we should be, we should be, we should hit the target. And so number one, recall this guy, recall Gascon, and I tell you one thing. Lot of candidates, when they were doing photo ops and they were doing campaign kickoff, kickoffs. I was the only guy who was going door to door and, and take, you know, petitions and getting to the signature. You know, so, and that's even before when I sa- when I decided to run for city council. So I've been doing this for a long, long time.
I think a lot of them aren't doing it because they, they're afraid for people to think that they're.
Yeah, they are afraid.
That they're, that they're, that they're a Republican and not a Democrat or something.
And I don't care about that, I just do it for my city. You, I mean, you, you think whatever you wanna think, I'm only doing for city, I'm doing it for my family, I'm doing it for you, your family, so that's my only concern. My most important thing, so I think when people were, all the candidates were like doing all the photo ops and, you know, uh. The kickoff, I told you, telling you about that, I was the only guy who was doing this petition door to door. And every Sunday I would go, I would go to Roxbury Park, I'd go to Nast Park, I'd go to some farmer's market, you know, and I would get the signature. Uh, to make sure that we get rid of this guy, he's the main problem, you know. I, I believe in groundwork, I don't believe in a lot of talk, like a lot of candidates do that, if you see the debate. Oh, we, we support Gascon, the other, someone say, oh, I support Gascon, but can you, can you?
Oling two said they didn't, but they didn't actually say it, they just didn't say they supported it and they, and they, um, they. I, I, I was gonna use a word that's not a nice word.
Exactly, so you are.
Pussyfooted, uh, what's that, is that the word? Uh, um, something like that.
Yeah, so they would say stuff, but they would never do it, so it's all talk, 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 no action. I believe in groundwork, and I actually did it and I approved, you know, even if right now you go in my car, you open the trunk, you're gonna find all the petitions, you know. I always carry with me, so anytime I get a chance.
You can ask people, talk to them about it, explain why.
So that's how serious I am, and, and, and I get zero money for doing this, it's not for any financial or political gain for me. And as I told you that I was doing way before I, I decided to run for city council, okay, so that's number one, we have to recall this guy. Number two, I strongly believe that we have to cancel all the private securities, cause they have no power, no one gets scared of them. So instead of, uh, paying them, use those firms to hire more police officers, that's very important. Number three, um, we have to make some exemption, like a mandate exemption for align for law, law, law enforcement. Because we are already run, you know, short of police officers, and if you keep mandating more and more, they, they all gonna go, you know, so just for the safety.
There's no mandates as of now for the police officers, just like, like there are for the fire department.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I've, I've found out why today from one of the councilmen, which is that, um. Because they don't have to get as close to the people that they're serving, which makes no sense to me whatsoever.
I, I mean, if people have different views on this, and some, some people said they need to have, they need to be vaccinated, and some say they don't.
I mean, I've had some get pretty close to me, so.
So.
And if you're arresting somebody, you gotta get pretty close to them.
Exactly, so what I mean to say, if they are, if there are mandates for police officers, we should make some exemption for them. If they are not, perfect, okay, no problem, but we should think of getting more police officers.
So you think we should, we should mandate vaccines for police officers?
No, we should not.
Oh.
So what I'm, what I'm saying that, I don't know what city gonna do about vaccine mandate, but I, but right now, I'm, what I'm saying is. We should make exemption for them, you know, if you, as a city council, you approve.
You think for the firemen too?
Yeah, we should, we should exempt them, because we are short of firemen, we're short of all the law enforcement, so if we think that we need to have some kind of exemption. That can support getting more people, like more police officers, join B H P D.
So you, you think that the police officers aren't actually?
Yeah, I, I heard that some left because of mandates.
There's no mandates on police officers, so I don't know who told you that.
Okay.
I heard that they, you know, left because they were forced out for early retirement.
Why they were forced out?
Um, well, some of them, seventeen of, seventeen people that, seventeen of the officers that sued the city. Um, and I don't know the number, there's still several of them still working for the city, which I found kind of interesting.
Okay.
Um, but, um, I believe they were forced out of early retirement, probably because they were the good guys. In my opinion, um, and I don't know, cause I haven't, um, you know, done a full investigation with that yet, but, um.
Well, I, I spoke to a few people and they said, oh, because of mandate, so, well, well, I, when I, when, if I win. If I get on city council, I'll find out exactly what the thing is and why, why we are short of police officers, you know, the exact reason.
So, but they tell me that they're hiring, they tell me that they're, you know, that they are, you know.
Yeah, they, they say they're hiring, but people.
Also say that they're giving them raises, fourteen percent up, uh, over the next three years.
But why are they not able to find officers?
Well, I don't think they should even be get, getting those raises, um, fourteen percent is pretty large number, and especially since I think that our offices are paid pretty high.
Yeah.
Um, almost a quarter million a year, but, um, with their, you know, bonuses, um, not pensions, bonuses, um, and benefits.
Okay.
Which don't include.
Mm-hmm, so then why are we the short of police officers? There should be a reason behind it. Now, what is the reason? We, I mean, we are, we're giving them good money, you know, really good, I think B H P D has the best salary.
I don't think any of this should be about money, I think that, um, if the right person is doing recruiting, I can't imagine that they wouldn't have. People like dying to work for the city, I mean, this is a beautiful city, that, that normally doesn't have a lot of crime.
Crime, yeah.
So, um, I mean, now we do.
Yeah, exa-
But, you know, it's alling because people know that they can get away with things now because of our lack of, you know, uh, policing.
There is something behind, there is something behind the scenes, and that's what I'm talking about, because if we are giving them good money. We are hiring police officers, but still we are short of police officers, something going on behind.
It's not about the amount, it's about the training in my opinion.
Exactly, so it's, it's not about the amount, it's not about the money, it's not about that we're not hiring, we're hiring too, but still no one joining B H P D and.
Well, we don't really know.
Yeah, so.
I mean, we don't really know.
Yeah, so what is, what is, what's happening behind the scene, why?
We only know what they tell us.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, that's my point, if, I don't know exact, the situation is, we have to go behind the scene and find out.
And everyone has a different story that's on top, so.
From saying, everybody has a different story, but anyways, that's the later on thing. Uh, if there are no mandates for officers, perfect, because right now we just need a lot of police.
What about mandates for the children?
No, I, I, I don't, I don't support that. We should not have any kind of mandates for children at all, you know, at all. I really don't support that, uh, we should not force, I mean, if, as a, as a, as a parent, you want to vaccinate your kid. Uh, you're more than welcome, I, 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 I don't lose respect for you, 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 you're a parent, you know, you decide he's your kid or she's your kid. You decide what you wanna do, you do it, but do not force my kid, you know, to take something to protect your family, you know. So that's not fair to my family.
Well, because you don't believe that it's protecting.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Because, because we know that you can get it and you can transmit it.
Exactly, so the people were taking, they feel that it's protecting them, but, you know. And in my theory, even if it was protects or not protect, I, I just.
Doctor?
Uh, yeah, she's a doctor, and my wife is a doctor, so, so even the vaccine protects you, doesn't, you know, doesn't protect you, I don't care. But I don't want my kids to take it, just because you guys are forcing, you know, my kids, you know, to take the vaccine.
So if you don't, um, support the, the, um, vaccine, I am assuming that you don't support masking our children either.
No way, no, so no masking, I don't support any kind of mandate, you know, which is not scientifically proven. Unless this vaccine was in a clinical trial for like five, six years, seven years, like other vaccine, I would be more confident, you longer.
Eight, ten years.
But you can do, you can make something eight months like that, you know, so.
And, and what about, um, for businesses?
Yeah, so I feel that our businesses already suffering.
Mandates.
Yeah, already suffering so much, see, first we had lockdown because of COVID, so they were shut down, then we had B L M riots. Uh, you know, they were shut down, they were boarded up, the whole city, then after that, now they started to have, you know, smash and grab, robberies. They, you know, they're losing money there too.
Did you know that they, did you know that still to this day, on Burton Way, they have fences around the trees and some art structure? They're protecting the, the art and the trees, but not the citizens, could you imagine?
So, the, the businesses has gone through so much in our city, we can't give them another reason, you know, just to. I mean, how are they gonna survive? Now, the next one is mandate.
A lot, there's a lot of vacancies, there's way too many vacancies.
I mean, they are, the, small businesses are the lifeline of the city, if we, we keep surpassing them.
Do, do you have any ideas to encourage businesses to come to our city?
Of course, we need to cut taxes because we charge a lot of taxes, all the red tape, you see, I, 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 I put everything here, so. And we have to, if there are any kind of mandates, you know, I don't believe in that, we need to, we need to remove all the mandates for us. For our business people at least, all the, all the small businesses, yeah, do things with the safety precautions, if something is important, but you can't tell. If you don't enforce mandates, you'll be shut down, no, you can't do that, you know, we need more police patrolling. Especially in the business district in downtown, so that we can avoid all the robberies and smash and grab.
We should have police patrolling all the time, on foot.
Yeah, on the bike, or maybe on.
You know what, I have to tell you, um, I don't really see the benefit of the bikes.
Yeah.
The park rangers are on bicycles, our police officers do not need to be on them.
Yeah.
Um, the only time I actually saw them was at Halloween by the witch's house, and, um, when people were, um, shaving. Uh, when boys were shaving girls with, uh, Nair and shaving cream, and one of my daughter's friends lost hair. They said to me, oh, well, what are we gonna do, there's so many of them, well, maybe get off your bikes.
Yeah.
Um.
So, so police patrolling is very important, so that at least we can safeguard them, they've gone through a lot last two years, a lot. And I see a lot, you know, because, so we have to give them, you know, ensure them that you guys are safe here, you can do your business, no problem. We have to remove homelessness because it's affecting businesses too, you know.
It's affecting everything.
Yeah, everything, so.
The filth in the city, the dirt, the crime.
Yeah, yeah, so for homelessness, you know, I mean, if someone really needs help, fine, we get them help, but then we have to do something about it. And I thought of an idea, I tell you, today it was shared in my group, um, and I really believe that we should, we should work on this. Uh. So I think we, what we can do, if, if a, if some homeless people really need help, of course, we get them help they need. But then remaining the bad apples, we need to get rid of them, and for, and how, how we can do it as a city council. We have to make a special enforcement zone, you know, where, you know, where you have a walk, yeah, side, sidewalk. There should be a limit that up to like ten feet or twenty feet of sidewalk, no one can camp, no one can sleep, no one can sit. And I know in s- city in L A did that actually, some.
City?
So in L A, I think West Hollywood probably.
No, West Hollywood's a nightmare.
Let me see, uh, what city is it?
Street looks like, uh, right outside of, uh, all of the streets, some bordering out there, like full of tents.
Whole, whole West Hollywood.
Hollywood is a nightmare, West Hollywood is a nightmare.
Okay, so it's five hundred feet of Hold and Burton Way from Third Street. So that area, and, and Burton Way, so what they did, they made that specific area as a special enforcement zone. Where you cannot do no camping, um, you can lay down inside.
Cross with Burton, but I guess.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so I have a notice here, so in that space, I'm gonna go visit that site too, you know, because I just got to know about this today. And I'm gonna go drive down there and see like how they did it, so that same thing, I wanna bring it here, I mean, for homelessness, people who need help, fine, we give them help. But other bad apples who are just, you know how they are, they're so wild and.
Have an ordinance that you couldn't ride those birds in our city, they, what happened to that?
Everything.
You know, they, it's like, they, you know, they just let all, everything go.
Yeah, everything go, you know, because.
So the thing is, how are you gonna fix that? Cause that's really the problem, before you could do anything else, I feel like.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
And obviously, you can't do it alone, but, you, you know, you could be a big voice and, and a big push with your colleagues.
I can always bring new ideas, which I think like the idea I just gave you, and I have so many other ideas in my thing. That I, if I start sharing with you, it's gonna take hours and hours, so I can bring all the ideas, city council, I know alone probably I can't pass everything. But at least, as you said, I can be a voice, you know, I can be a voice, I can bridge the gap between all the experienced people and a young guy like me who's just a normal.
I think it's four votes, you get the mayor and then you got the three count from him.
So four words, so, you know, so, uh, all five of us, at least I can be a voice and tell them something, maybe they listen to me, you know, they, maybe. Out of ten ideas, on one, they would agree, you know, this, they think it might work, and.
Well, I guess it depends on who, on, on who, on who you, you're sharing this, uh.
It also depends on the what kind of idea I'm gonna give them, and if they like it or not, but again, at least now.
Who your partners are.
Partners are in, uh.
So our, um, it says here strengthen education, now, now I can't agree with you more, and I have met with now. Um, several candidates, um, who have told me that, um. And one of them, being one of our council members, who told me this once before as well, um, including our mayor. And, you know, they really don't have a lot of involvement with the city and.
That's wrong.
And I said, but you know, you, you got a lot of parents that are gonna put pressure on for it, but, you know, um. And it, they, they say they really can't because it's from the state.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if it's from the state that they can't, um, they can't get involved, so, um. Besides like with monies that they're supposed to give them, but, um. Wh- what do you think you're gonna do to try and change that?
Yeah, if it's from the state, I think, I, again, I wanna be voice where we can change this thing. We have to, then we have to go to Sacramento, we have to have some kind of rights as a city, because we, you know, our school district's still part of Beverly Hills, you know, and. Our city council also part of, um, Beverly Hills, so there has to be some kind of coordination and connection. We just can't make excuse that we can't do nothing about it, because it's, you know, that the, the school board, uh, you know, run by state, you can't do that. I mean, if it's true, then I have to be that voice and make sure that the school board becomes a part of the city, you know. So if there's awareness, we need to, you know, re- we need to raise some kind of awareness and get support for all the parents, I'll be leading the way, you know, and I wanna do that actually.
Well, as parents that have been advocating for our children kind of behind closed doors, well, in, in meetings, um, you know, um. You know, speaking out in board meetings and things like that, um, you know, it's, uh. They're, they're very, uh, limited to, you know, you don't really get any answers, and there's really no transparency, and, um.
Nothing, I mean, I heard that, uh, they supplied the sex education, uh, you know, material to the parents. And they were, I think someone from the school board keep saying that, that it was male to each parent.
And it wasn't.
And it wasn't, you know, so, and one of the parents I talked to, they told me that they had to call school and reach out to school like few times. To get the material in hand, you know, and finally they did it after three tries, you know, so that's, that's pure lie that, you know, they did. There's no, as I said, there's no transparency at all, at all.
No transparency, and I think that there's probably hasn't been a lot of transparency within, you know, with council and the ci- you know, and the stakeholders as well, right? So.
No, not, not at all.
That's something that.
That's my main point, I mean.
That needs to be.
Everybody comes and tells me that, oh, city council cannot do anything with school board, you know, and, and that's why I'm running. Because I want to be that voice, lead that voice where we have to be involved with the school board, you know, it doesn't matter, it comes from straight. As a city, we have to be involved, and so far, nobody did it.
I agree with you.
So out of all the candidates, only my kids go to school, so I.
True.
No, who, who is?
John Marish has a child in the high school.
Oh, high school, okay.
He doesn't go to this district, but he has a ninth grader, he goes to a private school because he lives with his mother half the time, and.
Private school, okay.
Um, and the other one is Shiva.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, Shiva, I, I got it, okay, so, yeah, Shiva, I think Shiva's daughter goes to public school here?
Grade, yeah.
Okay, so my, my daughter is six years old and my son is four years old, and they go to public school here. So as a parent, I know the problem one, firsthand, how we have as a parent, no voice at all in school boards, nothing at all, you know. And that's what we need to change that, if we don't take control of our kids, in next two, three, four years. The school board's gonna, gonna rule our kids, you know, so what do you want? You want school boards to take control of your kids? Yeah, so you.
I mean, and from what I learned today, Gabe Halimi is not gonna be, um, running again next year, and that's really awful. We're gonna all have to reach out to him and encourage him somehow.
We have to, and then you have to have, and all the parents have to reach out to city council or Sacramento and make sure that our city has. Full involvement in school boards and control, not about even involvement, we have to have control.
So part of that would be also, um, if we had, um. I forget what it was that I, that I learned, and I learned it from another candidate, and it made sense, um. It's not a district attorney, but it's a city prosecutor is what we need to have.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if we had a city prosecutor, then we would be able to prosecute.
I think, uh, what I heard, we already have a city prosecutor, and we were thinking about getting our own D A for.
I was corrected today when I said it.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because others told something else too.
We hear different things from different people, one says this, one says that, so you don't really know what's true, there's no transparency. Whether they want us to know or they don't want us to know.
Yeah.
Um, and as people that weren't involved with any of this before.
What I was told from the official that city already discussing about getting our own D A.
I thought that's what I heard in one of the forums, but, um, I learned today from one of the councilmen that, when I said that, that it, that, you know, and I believe he knows just because.
Look, look at the gap between resident, resident and city council and school board, like no one has no coordination, no.
No transparency.
Transparency, no clear communication, hey, this is what we're doing, this is exactly what we're doing, no.
So that's, that would be, that would be my priority then, transparency, that's how you, that's how you're gonna accomplish these things.
Exactly, so that's, and that's the most important thing, so, so this is my number one priority right now, I mean. Um, of course, they're all on my important priorities, but this is also, uh, the, uh, education is also one of my top priority with the safety. That we need to have, we need to take control of school board as a city, which, you, as you, you said that, that it's, it's from the state and city council. Told you that they can do it, but we have to do this, or else school board will, will take control of our kids, you know, and we can't let it happen.
Well, they have, we need to, we need to take their power back, um, so that we are, you know, that we have say over what our kids are te- being taught and. And how they're, and, 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 and the educators that are there, that are really have been abusive towards a lot of different children in all the different schools, and. You know, they're not very transparent about it, and people just say hush, 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 and they don't wanna talk about it, nobody wants to talk about. At any of the teachers, I mean, three teachers alone in B V in the last, you know, five, six weeks were let go for inappropriate behavior with children.
To me, they should be exposed, so at least we know who are the bad apples, actually.
Well, not only that, but then you, if your kid had that person, your kid might have felt like they couldn't say anything, so you wanna know, so you can talk to your kid about it.
Yeah.
Um, instead of learning from sixth graders and how, or, you know, in your case, at first graders, um. A question I do need to ask, cause, um, it's, it came up, um, where, you know, I was asked to ask this question, question to candidates. Um, what are your thoughts on creating our own health department?
I mean, I haven't thought about it honestly, and I told you that my four most important issues right now I'm focusing is just safety. Reducing homelessness, education, and small businesses.
Own health department would help.
I think.
With mandates and things like that.
It would be a great idea.
It really would depend on who, who is involved with creating it and what, and who they brought in to be our, like, Ferrer.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can all agree on, actually, this offer.
See, if, if, if there's an option to have our own health department where we can, we can enforce our own law. I would be, I would be down for it, I, I would take it, because at least we know we have control, and we know who are the people who are enforcing. Their views on our, on our, um, city, because right now it's, we have, you know, from L A County. And it's, L A County is so big, so we can't even go and talk to them and do nothing about it.
It's so big, we're like nothing to them.
Yeah, we're like thirty-five thousand people here, and L A County has like over, I don't know how many millions, so we should have our own, so at least we have control. And we have, we can go and ask question to them, why you did that, why, why you didn't listen to us, you know, if we give you some advice as a resident. Why, I mean, we can ask them anything.
So there is a lot that's involved, but if, if it was brought, let's say, by the mayor, you would be in agreeance to do it, you would vote yes.
If to get our own health department, I would vote yes, only, not, not the policies so far, because I don't know what kind of policies we're gonna make, but.
We wouldn't know until there was another pandemic.
But it, but it's better to have control of, of our own health department in the city, that's the first very good, that's a first good step, you know, and, and. After that policies, I mean, of course, we're gonna work on that, and we're gonna, we're gonna be, we're gonna agree on something, we're gonna disagree on something, but it's better than. Living under the shadow of L A County, you know.
A hundred percent, I, I agree.
And the other, the most important thing I also wanna do, because I, I think a city lacks a lot of children-based businesses, you know, we don't have a lot of resources. If, if my daughter has to go to gymnastics, she has to go all the way to Culver City, drive down there, you know, and maybe. It applies to other sports too, other, other, more, more sports too, so what we need to do, we need, I wanna support some new businesses. Or maybe help them out in, in to cut taxes and that tape, and somehow invite more like kids.
Maybe if it's in some of our own, um, buildings, uh, there's a certain amount of time that you can have a pop-up shop and free rent. So that you can have the ability to grow your business and then.
Yeah, so children-based businesses, I really wanna help them out, I, I really wanna help people, businesses who wanna come to our city and open for children, you know.
Do you think that there's enough business to open like a gymnastics studio here, like that you refer, I know the, I know the two in Culver City, cause we've all, you know.
Yeah, Jack Gym and, and this one more, yeah, so I think the other one is shut down, um.
L A, L A Gymnastics?
Yeah, L A Gymnastics, it's shut, yeah, it closed, so, because of, uh, COVID.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah, so now only Jack Gym, so you all have.
So now they even charge more money.
More money, actually.
Oh, that was a fortune.
Yeah.
Because we had Joey's Gym here, which closed down, and the whole shopping center is empty now.
So, so see, if we have a space, we should encourage, you know, all the small businesses to open up kids-friendly businesses, you know, and we can. Instigate them, you know, somehow give them tax breaks or, you know, cut the red tape and do something about it, you know, I mean, I can't tell you exactly what I wanna do. But I wanna sit down with all the city council and see how we can.
Strategize.
And strategize, and see how we can help especially businesses who wanna open kids-friendly businesses, you know, and our city needs that, because we have. So many young families here, like my family, and we have to drive around to Culver City or L A and, you know, go through the homelessness and. You know, all the crime in areas.
About having an arts district, like they've been talking about, like in that area?
Unless you have a safety in place, there's no, I mean, I don't wanna talk about it, I wanna first make sure.
You gotta make the city safe first, I, I agree.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't personally think you can incentivize people to come here unless you make it safe.
Safe, yeah, that's, that's true, um, unless it's safe, you, you get the, you know, there's a coffee bean, uh, right, right on Wilshire, and I think, uh, on Bagel. That shut down.
Which one?
Coffee Bean, By Gale, and, no, Tower Drive and.
That's, that's L A.
Yeah, no, that's Beverly Hills.
That was Beverly Hills.
Yeah, so right before L A.
That was the border?
Yeah, that's the border, you know, with the metro station is by last evening.
Across the street.
Yeah, yeah, so a lot of businesses, they shut down. Why you want, you wanna create our district when you know all the stores are gonna be empty? No one's gonna use them out because there's no safety. I mean, they open something up and someone gonna come smash the, especially south side of Beverly Hills, you know, it's very unsafe. So we have more crime here than north side, so if you open up.
Right, uh, north of Santa Monica, there's nothing that happens.
Yeah, so, and then.
I mean, there was one murder north of Santa Monica, but that was an isolated incident, which was tragic, but.
Yeah, but here, I mean, I see Chopper every night, you know, I see police car every second, I can hear them, you know, yeah, so. You trying to.
I'm constantly apologizing to people while I'm on the phone with them.
I know, and I heard so many times too, like you were like, and talking to me, I'm like, police, no, like back to back, back to back. I thought we, sometimes I think we live in a war zone, you know, because.
I feel like sometimes that too, when I'm sitting in my apartment, I'm like, I'm like, I feel like I'm, there's a war going on and. And here I am by myself and like, what, like, this is awful.
Awful, yeah.
Awful, I mean, it was never like this.
Yeah, never, I mean, I spoke, that, that's the main reason why I'm running, because that's one of the reasons, uh, I told you, I spoke to so many people. And they have really had tears in their eyes, we, we were born here, we grew up here, we've never seen city going downhill like this. And this is crazy, and I'm like, wow, on a, see me, even I moved here five years ago, it wasn't this bad even five years ago. It started to go bad in the last.
Right, the last few years it got progressively worse.
Yeah.
But it, it started in twenty fifteen, from what I've been told, I wasn't here then, but progressively worse, like in the last, you know, two years.
The last two years really, really bad, so.
And even worse since August.
Yeah, so I was at, you know, so I wanted to really ha- invite businesses who are kids-friendly. For our kids, so that we have, we don't have to drive down far away from a city and everything is right be- within the city. So if we can help those businesses out by giving them tax break or something, we'll do it. And the most important thing I wanna do, I wanna have police patrolling.
Or maybe a program with the school that they can do, like in other words, they can be a, they can, they can. They can be some part of the school, because our school needs after-school programs, you don't have kids that are.
We do have some programs in the school too, you know.
So I have a problem with our after-school programs and you don't have kids that are, that have the sport teams yet, cause they're too young.
Yeah.
But how they have it, if your kid hasn't been playing since they're six years old. Um, there's no place on the teams for them, because all the kids that have been playing since they're six years old are the ones. And there's no after-school program at, at the school, on site.
Yeah.
And what about working parents?
Yeah, I know.
I mean, do you wanna just let your kids run to Beverly Drive, um, and, um, and, you know, witness a smash and grab?
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, hundred percent, school, I mean, school needs to do some more programs for, for young families, you know, after-school especially.
They need to be able to have, have, have more, more programs.
I don't know, we, do we have gymnastic here? No, I, I don't think so, any of the school has gymnastics.
No, they don't.
Okay, so we have space there.
But I, I don't know many schools that do have gymnastics.
But other schools, other cities, uh, have other resources for kids to go and like, for example, Culver City or L A people, they go to Culver City and do gymnastics. We don't even have those resources, so if we don't have that, then we have to use our schools for that, you know. Or we invite businesses and give them some benefit.
We can definitely use another little kids gym like Joey's Gym. I'm curious to know why they left even, but, um, they were here for a very long time, it's kinda sad.
And the other most important thing I wanna do, I wanna have police patrolling by all our schools every hour, you know. So, or maybe if it's possible, we have one police car parked throughout six, seven hours till the time.
Can I suggest something so that when, um, when you're, when you're in a, in, in office, you could, uh, make sure this happens? I think that we need to have officers walking, we call it walking the beat, that's because of San York City.
Yeah.
They should be walking the streets.
Yeah.
They should have smiles on their faces, they should be greeting people, that's how you create community.
Yeah.
They should be friendly and always have their eyes out and open to make sure that things are safe around them.
Yeah.
And if somebody needs assistance, just stop and talk to them.
Yeah.
Besides the ones that are patrolling in cars, you have to have officers walking on the street.
Yeah.
You have to.
Yeah, yeah, of course, you know, I mean, I was, I mean, whoever officers I met so far in Beverly Hills, they all were pretty nice.
Lucky you.
Smiling.
Lucky you, I haven't, I haven't come across that, I guess I'm so intimidated.
Including the chief, they were all pretty nice to me, you know, um, and I spoke to at least five or ten of them, and they were all very, very nice to me now. I mean, maybe not all are same.
Them in what situation, be- just as you're running for council?
Yeah.
Different situation.
Yeah, maybe.
Very different situation.
Yeah, so maybe you're right.
Had to call them for help.
Yeah, I mean, I did, two times I did.
Or, or witnessed them helping other people and being around, or.
But I did call them two times for help because they were like, kind of, you know, there was a guy homeless, he was like very violent at that time. And screaming and yelling, so I called them up, they were pretty nice and, uh, to push them away from my, by my house, so. Uh, but apart from that, they were nice to me, but yeah, you're right, maybe in some cases, isolated.
Oh, I have a lot of cases and I don't, we don't need to discuss it now, we can discuss it when, when you get into the right position.
Okay, so this is again, another thing I wanna do, I want to have police patrolling by our school district, you know, by all our schools.
I don't know if, I don't know if they're at all the schools, I can tell you that there is one at least assigned to B of V M S, I'm sure.
Yeah, but there's no, nothing in Horseman, uh, no, 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 there's.
They don't have somebody patrol?
No, they have, they have traffic police.
I don't, I don't think that what the officer does i- and, and, um. Is, um, I don't, I don't think that the way they're doing it is right, but they, they do have. An officer like assigned to the school, I don't know how many times it's supposed to go around or.
So I need to, yeah, I never seen anyone by my, by my daughter's school.
But you'd rather a police officer than having the team of security guards that, um.
Exactly, yeah, so I would rather have police officers, you know, at least making every.
Get rid of the security.
Yeah, so every, every hour at least, yeah.
So you got one second to, uh, to, uh, tell us about your background?
Okay, so, um, I'm a re- registered guy, I sell real estate. As you all know, because it shows on my candidate statement, but before, and also, uh, own a small business, you know, we make. Health products like vitamins, protein powders and all that, so that's another business, but I originally moved from India. Uh, to the U S in two thousand eight, and then, um, four years I met my wife. Uh, got married, have two kids now, and then we moved to Beverly Hills for some time. Um, what else you wanna know? I mean, pretty simple life, um, and then, I always loved the city.
Moved here to be safe and you just, you got here and you were like, what's going on?
Yeah, exactly, so because before getting married, I used to live here, I moved out, I got married, I moved out, um. To the suburbs, because that's what my wife thought is a safe place to be, to raise your kids, uh, I lived there for like three, four years, but then.
Where's the suburbs?
Uh, it's Diamond Bar.
Okay.
So Diamond Bar is by Sixty Freeway, so, uh, but after four years living in suburbs, because I always loved Beverly Hills, I really wanted to come back, you know. And she agreed on that, and then we finally moved back here, so first, I think one or two years was pretty okay, I mean. I didn't see so much crime, but in the last two years, especially, these last two years, it got really bad, you know, so. Um, it really broke my heart actually, when I started seeing so many, you know, the things happening in the city. And that's why I decided to run for city council. But just a normal guy, you know, who loves gym, fitness, um, you know, been working out for last, I don't know, twenty years now. To, actually more than that, twenty-five years.
A lot to step up to a position like this, so you really have to want change.
People know, city council people don't get paid, yeah.
It's, it's, it's essentially, it's a.
It's kind of free job basically doing it and.
You get a little money.
Yeah, a little money, and, and that's why you see everyone who's in the city council, all over. The U S are like sixty, fifty, seventy plus people, because they all retired and probably nothing better, have nothing better to do in life, so. Let's do it, but as a young person, you know, who have two kids and I can, if I want, I can.
I have, I will tell you this, trying to schedule meetings with these guys, it's a pretty busy job, especially during, um, vo- uh, voting season. Campaigning season.
But that's the only job they have, that's why they're pretty busy, you know, I mean, but me, I have to do my business, I have to do this, I'm stepping up.
Some have some jobs, but not all of them, I, I, I agree, it's a, it's definitely a huge responsibility.
Yeah, I mean, even if they do have some job, but I don't think that they are in the same position like me, because I. They, their kids already, you know, uh, grown up and.
They're already established, they already have their money.
Done everything. My kids are too, I mean, young, my daughter is like only six years old, my son is like four years old, I still have to law things for them. But then I, I thought the way city was going downhill, I thought someone has to step up, you know, and be a role model. Because I can't just, I can't expect people to work for me, you know, I can't expect, oh. If these guys don't fix the city up, I'm just gonna leave the city or maybe.
You gotta be involved to make the changes happen. That's why I'm doing this too, I, I, I hear you.
You're doing this too, so that's only, and I know so many people who are working in, within the city, you know, trying to make it better, and they're good people. But nothing is happening, because they are not in the position where they can make laws, you know, so, and I thought someone. Someone like me needs to really step up, you know, and take their position, so, and that's what I'm doing, especially when it comes to schools, I know. What's, what's happening to the kids now, all over the country and especially in California and in Beverly Hills now, so.
Have you met all the candidates in person?
Uh, in person, no, but I meet them in a debate, but not like one-on-one, I, I didn't talk to them, yeah. I, I think last time we had some event.
Kevin?
Huh?
Did you get a chance to meet Kevin?
Kevin I never met, because he never came to any debate, so, but I did meet all of the candidate in the debate and then. Two or three I met in some event we had, the police event, so I was talking with them, they were okay, um, but never met Kevin though. So, so basically it just.
I heard good things.
Yeah, he's a good, I heard good things too.
But I, you know, I haven't.
I just wanna let everybody know, this is, this, to me, I'm sacrificing, this is a sacrifice.
Oh, it's a sacrifice, it's taken over my whole life.
Yeah, I mean, if I was seventy plus, it won't be a sacrifice for me, because I have free time, okay, fine, I go to the city council, do some work. Go to restaurant, have, you know, those photo op, people respect me and cut ribbons and all that, but for me.
I get it.
It's not, it's not like that, because I have a young family, have to come back home, still work for them, work for the families here, work for the city in safety.
You gotta make sure your kids are safe, I get it, I'm, I'm the same, I'm same.
Cause I, for me, I have easy way option, easy way out, I can just move my, pack my bags up and move to a safer place, like. Maybe somewhere in Orange County or Newport Beach, but I don't wanna do that, because if everyone started doing that, then who, who gonna take the lead? Who gonna step up and who gonna make the city safer?
We are losing a lot of, uh, you know, they.
I know so many people.
A lot of people are leaving.
Can you imagine, in, I know at least ten families in the last one and a half month, they moved out of Beverly Hills.
They keep talking about, you know, wanting to, uh, you know, that we, you know, ha- have all these, you know, to get all these families to come in. But, you know, they have to fix things before.
They don't, they live in denial, they don't even know people are actually moving out of the city, not coming in, no one wants coming in.
Well, if they were involved with the school district.
Yeah.
Then they would now.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, so, um, city council needs to get involved with the school district.
They have to, and that's why I'm running, because I know city council is not involved in school, with the school board, and that's really bad for our kids. As a city council, we need, we need to be involved with, with, with the school board, you know, because it's about our parents. We are the resident of this city, we pay taxes in this city, our kids go to school in this city, so why the hell, I don't wanna use that word. Why we, why the city council, we can't, yeah, why the heck? We can be involved with our school board, why? Because the kids belong to resident and resident are part of Beverly Hills, city council part of Beverly Hills, it doesn't make no sense to me.
That, that's missing.
The money.
The money that's missing and the money that the city gives them with the bonds, but also the money that's missing.
Yeah.
Is everybody's, it, from the city, and it's millions, like hundreds.
I feel this is just a corruption game basically, so you wanna be, you wanna stay away from the school board, because so that everybody has their own liberty. To do stuff what they wanna do.
And not be transparent.
Yeah, uh, so.
Residents.
Because when you, when you both think, both, school boards and city council both are involved deeply and the residents are involved deeply. It's, it's pretty hard to, not to be transparent, you know, you have to share all the information and probably no one wants to do that. And that's why they kept a good distance from each other, you know.
It could be.